Ready to go? We have kickoff.
Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, October 6, 2021. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Oh, he already said it. Stand for silent meditation.
Mr. Keys?
Let's have him pause for a moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time and we thank you for this day that you have assembled this council that we might make wise and prudent decisions on the behalf of the city. We ask that you look out over those who are in mourning and the less fortunate. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes of the September 15, 2021, City Council Meeting and bills for payment on September 24th, October 1st, 8th, and 15th. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. We have a presentation by Councilman Mel Witherspoon. If we could have Deputy Chief Marucci come up and the officers that are here.
Good morning. All these gentlemen. These are the individuals that participated in the Summer Basketball League. Their participation was to observe and protect, and they did that. We celebrated 31 years this year, and over these 31 years, we have not had any major incidents. Their presence deterred a lot of situations. In one particular situation, one of the officers told me, and I wasn't aware, that there was a group coming down to fight. They were aware of it, and their presence ended it before it started. This is why I support the Erie Police Department and the law enforcement throughout the city, county, and America. Very important to me. This is why I chose to honor these gentlemen for service well done.
Okay, this award is presented to the Police Department on behalf of the Spoons League Organization. We present this plaque in appreciation of your support throughout the years you have provided a safe haven for the Erie County youth to enjoy outdoor recreation and safe surroundings. Without your involvement, the league would not have been successful and many of our youth would have taken another path in life. You have made a difference. Thank you. Melvin Witherspoon, Founder, Commissioner, 1990. Okay, this is an appreciation award for Patrolman Max Brazil for his outstanding contributions to the inner-city youth throughout Spoons Summer Basketball League. Thank you, Mel Witherspoon. This is an appreciation award for Jamie Russo, Sergeant Jamie Russo. Patrolman Jamie Belton. And we'd also like to recognize Patrolman James McLevan, Patrolman Dave Smith, and Patrolman Stan Gill. And now you have this last one. This is the city?
No.
This is on behalf of the Spoons League Organization. We present this plaque in appreciation of your support for 31 years you've provided a safe haven for Erie County youth to enjoy outdoor recreation and safe surroundings. Without your involvement, the league would not have been successful and many of our youth would have taken another path in life. You have helped so many. Thank you, Mel Witherspoon.
Again, thank you very much to our protectors. I appreciate it. I'm not sure if I'll be around for another 31 years, but I'll turn it over to somebody. But I'll be looking down and make sure it's running properly. I'm not going to be looking up. Thank you.
Thank you to you, Mel. Okay, Mr. President, before we get started, I'd like to give a shout-out to a fellow Penn State student, Civic and Urban Politics Class Person attending Katara Hinman in our audience. Go PSU.
Welcome.
She's visiting for her civics class. Request for repository sales. Is anybody here for a repository sale? Anybody here for a repository sale? Anybody here for a repository sale? Okay, we could go into public comments.
Anybody present to speak?
Good morning.
Give us your name and address, and then you have it.
My name is Sheila Woger. My address is 2011 Fairmount Parkway here in the city of Erie, Pennsylvania. I do have some correspondence that I wanted to share with the solicitor here, and I would hate, I hate to put a damper on Mr. Witherspoon's presentation, but I'm here not necessarily to share some bad news, but a bad experience I had with an employee at the Erie Water Authority. I had had an experience after suffering financial difficulty two years ago after becoming a homeowner for the first time, where I was discharged from the Eagle's Nest, suffered financial difficulty, and my sewer and garbage bill fell delinquent, and yet, and my water was turned off, and that bill was current. And so I'm going to give this to the solicitor before I leave. But when I heard that the, once the moratorium was lifted this year, that when the authorities sent out a notice that they would be shutting out people's water, and reflecting back on my experience, for the first time in my life, I found myself with a savings account. And I'm of the mind that God blesses you to be a blessing to someone else, since I didn't want someone else to experience what I had experienced with my water being shut off. So I called the customer service manager, offering my savings account to save someone else from suffering what I had experienced. And the, the response that I received from him, you would have thought that I had asked for his head on a platter, because he asked me, well, what do you want to know this for? And all I asked him was, do you have a customer service assistance program? Because when I needed it, you didn't have one. And so he gave me some off-the-line stuff. So I've attended two meetings with the Water Authority and haven't gotten a resolve. And I had questioned one of the, one of the board members, a comment that he had made on his Facebook page where he listed himself as, and this is what he has on his, on his Facebook page, redneck with a paycheck. And where I'm from, the state of Oklahoma, redneck is synonymous with the Ku Klux Klan. Well, then, I'm being accused of defaming his character when all I did was repeat what was on his Facebook page. Well, I can't speak was there without being accused, and that was not in my intent. And my question was, if that is what you represent, I don't want you on this board. That was all, that was all I asked, and I'm being accused of something, and that, that was not in my intent. I was wanting to help someone, and that is how I got involved. That's why I'm here today. Not because I needed the help this time, but what if I do in the future? Am I going to have that same response? And all I was asking for was to be of help to someone else, because now I'm in a position, or where I was in a position, to be of help to someone else. So then, when I was sharing this with a friend of mine who happens to be a landlord, she said, well, Sheila, I have tenants. She said, I'm notified. Well, she receives a copy of her tenant's utility bill, and so she knows when the tenant went. And she said, and she said, and I can call the Water Authority and tell them to turn the tenant's water off. I'm like, you can't? Why would you want to do that? You know, the Bible says that we are to help the poor, you know, not to put any more pressure on them. I said, and you're in a position to help the poor. Why the poor? Why would you have someone's water turned off? Well, Sheila, their bill is like $3,000. I'm like, what? How does a bill become that high? And I was only a month behind when my water was turned off. I was only a month delinquent. So was he sending me a message? You know, that I'm a part of this council culture? Can't afford it? You afford it, you don't use it? Is that what, was he sending me a message? And nobody, the authority can give me an answer, but yet they can accuse me of being something that I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to cause any trouble, but if I cause trouble, it's going to be good trouble. And also, I would like to give the mayor a message that as a part of the senior program at the JFK Center, our program is solid. We have a solid program. However, our children do not. So we need help in our children's department at the JFK Center. And that's all I have to say. I was waiting for someone to ring the bell. I could go on, but I see here that I have five minutes. Do I have more time? But I just wanted to get this in, that I'm not here to cause any trouble, but from his tone, you know, I can see why they don't have a customer service program, because he would frighten anyone off. See, and my grandmother told me when I was a child, never run from the roar, always run to the roar, because what you're going to find is a mean old lion, mean old toothless lion, is what she said, with nubs as claws, and all he has is a roar. And I have yet to meet this man, but he didn't scare me. He stirred me up. So I'm here to make sure, because like I said, I could get no answer from the authority. I went to a sewer authority meeting last week, and I was told by the solicitor, no, you need to go to the city, because they can't help you here either. So, so take your complaint to the city. So that's why I'm here today. And I want to give you the correspondence that I had with him, because when the director there read it, his first comment was, do I see something here? And yes, I see something here. And so when I was at the last meeting, which was last Thursday, at the last Water Authority meeting, I asked a question, is there something illegal going on here? Is this an illegal practice? And you could have heard a pin drop. No answer. So that's all I have to say. And to you, Mr. Witherspoon, I congratulate you. How many young men have articulated to college and whatnot from your program?
Well, I don't know 31 years, but like I said, the last three years, it was 18, and we had two young ladies that played in the WNBA.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
No way?
Go to ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16247, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from appropriated anticipated revenue from Erie Strayer Company, sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Number 16247, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16247 by yeas seven, nays zero. On first reading. This takes us to new business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Winarski.
Hope to move the balance of the agenda.
Mr. Winarski first, and Mr. Witherspoon with the second. Any, holdouts? Separation, that's the word I wanted. Thank you, sir. We probably should separate number three. We probably should separate number three. That's it?
Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Any discussion on this resolution? You want me to read it first?
Yeah, you may read it.
Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the City Council of the city of Erie, that the proper city officials authorized to execute a trail structure agreement number 010Y02 with the Department of Transportation, PennDOT, regarding the trail structure, which will be constructed over the Bayfront Parkway, over the Bayfront Parkway, State Road 4034, adjacent to Holland Street, Holland Pedestrian Bridge. This agreement will remain in full force and effect indefinitely unless terminated as provided in the agreement.
Many hours of hard work have been put into this agreement, and the whole Parkway situation. Thought it might just be a good idea to bring it that, out that way, and then put it through the vote, so everybody knows that we're behind it. Any other questions, comments? David? No? Let's hear the vote.
Voting on the resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. This takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports. Well, which way should we go? Let's go over to the top. Ms. Allen.
Okay. In soon, we'll be looking at the request from Public Works for money from the American Rescue Plan to do, do seven top priority projects related mostly to storm water, but also one is a sanitary sewer project, I believe. I have been fortunate enough to be invited into some discussions over the last, well, many months about a proposed national infrastructure bank, which could provide the financing for the nation's infrastructure needs. And I just wanted to point out that I was a co-signer of an op-ed that was in the Erie Times News on Sunday. Public Bank could meet our staggering need for national infrastructure repair. So I'm hoping that maybe this gets some traction, because there have been a lot of questions raised about, you know, there's, there's two infrastructure bills pending in Congress. One is the bipartisan infrastructure bill, the other one is Build Back Better. We know that Erie, like many places, has many infrastructure needs. When my son was here over the weekend for my birthday, lives in Maryland, and he said, Mom, he was talking about one particular road, he goes, that road is terrible. I said, well, welcome back to Erie, Mark. He hadn't been here for a year and a half because of COVID. Anyhow, it's an issue that's important nationwide, in particular in Erie. We'll be talking a lot more about storm water in, at the next couple of council meetings, but there are some, there is a plan out there to, to pay for infrastructure. Saturday is going to be Luther Manus Day from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. We passed a resolution last year making, I think it's Luther's birthday, a Luther Manus Day in perpetuity. So the public is invited to Manus Enterprises between 2:00 and 8:00 p.m. And I'm going to be actually having a conversation with Luther at 4:00, 10 questions with Luther Manus, things you always wanted to know about Luther, where he grew up, and, you know, talking about his army career, and his Gannon education, and working with high school students to help them get on the path to colleges, you know, Mel has done with, with his program. The last thing I want to say, this isn't really a committee report, but I know a lot of us have been listening to the numbers on COVID. I just got my booster shot on Monday, and one of the cool things was, you, you just sensed that excitement in, in there, where people are like, yes, now I can go get my booster shot. If only we could get that kind of excitement for those who have resisted getting the vaccine. There was an obituary in the Erie paper, there, in fact, there was one this morning from somebody who I think lived in Florida, who died of COVID. There have been, a lot of times, obituaries don't have to tell you how the person died, but we know that we've had a number of deaths recently. The person this morning was not from, originally from Erie, but died in Florida. This was another person who is originally from Erie and died on September 10th in Florida, I believe. And at the end, it says, "The family humbly suggest, those who are unvaccinated, consider getting vaccinated to help end this devastating pandemic." And I think about the heartbreak that it, it takes to have to, to decide that you want to put that in an obituary, to try and urge others to get vaccinated. So I'm still hoping there can be some kind of, you know, public campaign to figure out how, how do we, how do we change the, the course of this, and how do we get more people vaccinated? So that's, and I will be leaving shortly after this meeting to go to the Pennsylvania Municipal League Conference in Lancaster. I'm looking forward to talking to some people from Lancaster City Council. Lancaster has done a great job in creating a dashboard to let the citizens know how their ARP funding is being put out there. And we aren't at that stage yet, but I talked to Kathy Rosdick, and she also has said she's looked at Lancaster to see what they're doing. So I'm hoping to bring back some good information for my next committee report as I kick down the final seconds here. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, happy belated birthday. Don't let the mayor take advantage of you on this trip. Just your rumor out there, guys. They're driving together, with other people, of course. And thank you for going. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two items I wanted to mention here. We had a study session yesterday with Kathy Rosdick, and also Aaron Snipper from the Erie Redevelopment Authority. And we, we just wanted to, you know, have a discussion about what, what the planning was going on for the comprehensive housing. And it was, it was a very good discussion. Again, there's tons of data, tons of homework that was done to even get to this point. You know, it's really interesting to see, I would love to see, you know, how, how far we've come, and where, where we need to go is, of course, the, the tough part. But the housing plan is a three-year plan. It's not going to solve all the problems, you know, again, it'll take a, a good, hopefully a good chunk of it out, and hope steer us in the right direction. You know, there's just so much, so much out there, but of course, we have to use our dollars effectively and strategically to, to, to do what we, we can do, given the resources available. You know, there's a, a time limit on the funds that be dispersed, though. So I think with this plan, the buckets were created to prioritize in different areas, and of course, to disperse the, the money in each one of those buckets, it's going to take a lot of work in planning. So I, it was a good, good discussion, I hope to continue that soon, to, to release those funds where they're, where they're needed. And just wanted to congratulate Councilman Witherspoon for many, many years of the, the league. It's, I'm sure it's, it's, it has affected many lives for many years, and I just want to thank you, Mel, and, and also everyone has assisted under your leadership. So thank you again, appreciate it.
You, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the EMTA meeting virtually, and they receive new para-transit buses, and they are working on incentivizing people to continue to ride the bus, to get their numbers up there. And they are working on trying to get a business into their modal place, so that, that new building will be used for the city of Erie. So hopefully that will come into fruition soon. Driving around, there are still people, I noticed going down Parade Street today, after the mighty fine pickup I had this morning. There's people that still put out way more than needed for garbage, as if they're emptying their house. So I think we need to somehow communicate more to the people that they need to use that number and call into the city for their one item pickup, and not to abuse that. We were driving by State Street the other day. My husband got so excited about Rita's, and I saw that we voted on them to have an easement. So he'll be very excited about that. State Street area businesses seem to be improving. We have Chipper's expanding their restaurant area, and the New Eat &amp; Poor is open, and that's pretty interesting in the basement. If you go downstairs, they have a collage of all of Erie's, I mean, not all, but historic, and there's people you'll recognize in the past, and very interesting place. Yesterday's study session, I thought, was very good. And again, I will reiterate that I'm glad it's going to take care of the blighted properties that have been bothersome for the neighborhoods when people get in the houses there and cause problems. But I do want to address the most needy of our Erie people, the homeless. And winter is coming once again, and we are still in the pandemic, and there will still be some social distance guidelines. And I don't know how those overflow shelters will work. I really think we need to use some of that ARP money and really try to find answers to a situation that really needs to be addressed in Erie. So that is my biggest concern, as the weather's going to, I know personally people who are out there, and the winter's really going to cause a hardship for them. I extend my birthday wishes to Mr. Luther Manus. I'm going to be visiting a friend at the Peak and Peak this weekend, so I won't be able to attend. Mr. Witherspoon, I was pumping gas this morning at a place, and a person next to me pumping gas, or across from me, we chatted a conversation, and he said to have a good day, and I said I was going to a council meeting, and he said to, you were still on council, and he was thinking about you, so I wanted to pass that along to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winarsky.
I have no report this morning, Mr. President.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Witherspoon. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned in the caucus room, I'm working with Brian McGonig and Penneck and A.J. and Tolle, the city Public Works, to identify who owns the manholes, which ones in the city, because some of them are not even with pavement, which causes two things. You know, if you go over and it's inch or more uneven, eventually it could cause you some problems with your vehicle. And in some cases, people will turn to avoid it, but yet turn into passing a double line and possibly causing an accident. So we are working on it, it's not a quick fix. Once we identify it, then we will probably look at the most probable area and try to attack that first. The only problem you may have is the weather.
I'm not talking yet.
No, you want me to stop talking? So the only problem you may have is the asphalt, the asphalt may, plant may close. So if we don't get to it this year, I know we won't get to all of them this year, hopefully we can get the main ones. And so we're working that way. I want to thank Liz and Kathy, who attended the Summer Basketball League Championship Games. They presented the medals, they presented the medals to the players, and some of the players said, well, who, who are they? I said, they are your sponsors. Oh, I like them. So they, they, this is not the first year they were there, they've been there two other occasions, and we, we welcome all citizens. We're not just there to play basketball and keep the kids out of trouble for five hours, but my main goal is to bring folks together in peace and harmony. I've been able to bring the east side and west side together. I know who the Crips are, I know who the Bloods are, and there's two or three other, I don't like the word gang, I say organization. They respect what we're doing. And my main problem is not the guys, it's the girls, and they aren't playing basketball, but social media, they talk about each other, and while I'm, let's meet up at Spoon's Corp. So I always tell them, why don't you meet down Prairie Square, so the mayor can see the confrontation, and police will give you security. Well, I can't get them to go down there. But with the police officers present, they deter everything. One more situation. Young man was very upset with another one, and some of my helpers told me that he was coming down to cause a problem. Now, I knew who this young man was, and when he came, he had fire in his eyes. I walked up to him, how you doing? He didn't say a word. He just stared at another guy. I said, you know, I've got older. I said, before, when you were younger, I'd grab you and, and hold you. I said, I can't hold you anymore. He said, Mr. Boone, I played in the league, I ain't going to start nothing here. I said, I appreciate that. Nothing happened after the game, both of them got in the vehicle. First thing I did the next day is look in the papers, see if somebody got killed. Whatever the problem was, they worked it out. That's what we do. That's what we do. It's not a, a black organization, it's not a white organization, it's people getting together, trying to make peace in this world we have today with all the guns and stabbings. Thank God, we haven't had any of that, and I have to give the kudos to the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Vice President Keys, who do?
I would just like to briefly speak about the study session we had yesterday with the Redevelopment Authority. We had a, a good discussion. I ask everyone to, you know, all the meetings are taped and put online, and so it's important to, you know, stay engaged and stay up with what's going on in your community. and stay up with what's going on in your community. This is a sizable ask from the Redevelopment Authority. And people need to be aware of what the ask is. And so that you can be informed, so that we can be informed of what the citizens think and want also. I've had a tough week. All my multimedia's were offline all for the past 10 days. So I don't have a lot to report. But I'll yield my time to the president.
Thank you, Mr. Keyes. You know, one of the things that you don't hear about is all the hard work that goes into the Spoon League. And you never hear about the hard work because it's all done with love. Mr. Witherspoon has done so much in our city that most people don't even know about. My son, Jeffrey, his son Graham, and a little guy by name of Justin Fatika, won one of the first three-on-three battles right down here in North Park Row. They beat an outfit out of Cleveland, and those guys walked off the court, the Cleveland boys, and even though they lost, but they did. Teamwork. And that's what it's all about. And thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Wonderful. Speaking of great people, Luther Manus is another one that has done countless, countless things for folks. I personally know that when those federal aid forms for college came out, he was known to stop at folks' houses at 11 o'clock at night to finish the FAFSA form. And he knew how to do it. He knew how to do it right. And that is just one aspect of the things that he did. The quiet things at Gannon. I'm proud to call him my friend also, and I will see him there Saturday, if Connie lets him come out. I thank you, folks.
Mr. President, could I ask one more thing before?
Sure.
Okay. I, just speaking about Mel, when you were talking, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just was thinking about what you said about the girls talking about social media and gathering and the conflict. If any of them would be interested, I think it would be really good if you could ask one of them to come to a council meeting and that the citizens to be heard, or people to be heard, whatever, it's public to be heard, to let people know. Because, you know, those hearings are going on in Congress right now about Facebook. And there's been a lot of information out there about Instagram and the damage it's causing, in particular, the teenage girls with bullying. And it may not be easy for somebody to come here and speak up about it, but I'm so glad you brought that to our attention. Because we often, we think about gun violence, and we think about the situation where you were able to resolve, you know, they resolved it, those guys who went away in the car. But what are the teenage girls doing? So they might, it might be uncomfortable to do it. Maybe it would be an unfair burden. But I think it would bring home the story to people in Erie that what's being talked about, you know, in testimony before Congress is impacting the social fabric in Erie. And for girls, I just think that would be interesting. Maybe that's not the right forum, but maybe they could write us a letter or send us an email and say, "This is what our world is like. This is, this is what is causing problems." So thank you for bringing, making something that's taking place, you know, hundreds of miles from here and bringing it home. You opened my eyes. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, I think that takes us to Mr. Betza.
I have nothing.
Okay. You have everything, sir, but we'll let you get off the hook. Okay. Therese, gone. I guess Renee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. I have a few things. First, I want to thank Mel for everything that he's done for the Spoon League and to congratulate him on being awarded with the Community Service Award by the Erie Municipal AFL-CIO. That was a well-deserved honor, and I know you don't do it for those reasons. But we recognize you, and we thank you, and we appreciate you for everything that you've done for Erie's youth and for the community at large. You are, you are a gift and a treasure to this community. So thank you very much. Also, let's see, the, I wanted to address Councilwoman Schaff on the homeless situation. We have been working with and meeting with the department, the County Department of Human Services, the 814 Shelter, which is the Erie County Coordinated Care Team with the Behavioral Health, Safe Harbor Behavioral Health. And we've been talking internally as well. We did receive $2.9 million in additional home funds that are ARP-related that have a focus on homelessness. And so Deb Smith and her team have been attending webinars about how we can spend that funding, but it will be geared toward homelessness. So I wanted to assure you that we are working on that. In terms of the study session last night, it is a big ask. We are looking to really create a one-stop shop and address a lot of the issues that we haven't had the funding to address. I don't know that it was mentioned last night, but about a year ago HUD guidelines changed. And so we're no longer allowed to use city HUD funding, CDBG funds, to demolish homes that were taken by eminent domain. So that's one of the reasons why we have, why the Redevelopment Authority has so many blighted properties that we haven't been able to demolish. And you saw the cost to acquire and to demolish these properties is exorbitant. It's money that we don't have. This will allow us to take care of that. It will also provide much-needed home repair grants. It's a combination of grants and loans. The loan fund was created under guidance from Brian Hudson and Chris Groner, because what we wanted to do is create a sustainable fund so that when the ARP funding runs out, we can still continue to help property owners into the future. Right now, we don't have the capacity to do that. So we'll be bringing that to you next council meeting. As Councilwoman Allen mentioned, we will also be bringing the stormwater request. We have approximately $10.5 million in projects that Public Works has identified as short-term priority projects that are really in immediate need. If an infrastructure bill passes and we can release that funding back to the ARP pot to be used for other purposes, we will do that. But in the interim, we would like to get started on some of those projects that we find are a high priority. The stormwater fee is a different mechanism to allow us to maintain the stormwater system into the future. Right now, there's no long-term sustainability for the aging infrastructure that's underground. We have pipes that are made of clay, that are 100 years old and that are crumbling. And we really need to put in a process for the long term to make sure that we're maintaining that infrastructure and protecting our environment as well. So that will be coming forward. We've been working with Wood Consulting on next steps. Also, at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing the request by the EMTA and PennDOT to extend that agreement. There will be no changes to it. It would just be an extension. Typically, those agreements occur for 50-year time span. The last agreement was only 10 years. And PennDOT is requesting that because of all the funding that they give EMTA, and that, you know, it's the grant and loan agreements are, you know, 20, 25 years into the future, that they would like to see a more stable agreement. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Day, I'm probably getting close on my time here, we posted a couple of events that are coming up. One, I think we posted, one I don't know that we've posted yet. One is Bomba Con Bia, which is taking place October 7th and 8th at 7:00. The details are on our Facebook. But on October 7th at 7:00, it's at the Mercyhurst University Taylor Little Theater. There's a presentation and workshop. And then October 8th at the MLK Center, there will be a concert at 7:00. And then also, there's a Hispanic Heritage Month Health Fair coming up on Saturday, October 16th, from 10 to 4 at the Boys and Girls Club on East Lake Road. And there will be doing free health screenings. Also, Erie News Now will once again continue the coat drive that they have in East Perry Square. That's going to be November 5th through the 7th. The morning of November 5th, they will start hanging coats on the trees and benches in East Perry Square for anybody who needs them to come and take one. So if you have a coat that you would like to give, please bring that down again, November 5th through the 7th, and hang it on a tree or a bench in East Perry Square. Let's see. I also just wanted to quickly mention the COVID situation as well. In the last seven days, there have been about 1,000 positive cases of COVID. Since this pandemic started in March of 2020, we've had 512 deaths in Erie County. That's a lot of people that we've lost. That's a lot of people that are grieving. And I, again, want to just encourage people to mask, to get vaccinated if they can. There was a little girl who recently passed away. She was a fifth grader. And I can't remember, I think it was in, I can't remember what state it was in, Virginia, maybe, West Virginia. I can't remember. But I saw the story on CNN yesterday. She developed COVID. They didn't know what she had. They thought it was strep. They took her to the doctor. It was a negative strep test. She was tested for COVID as a precaution. The test results hadn't come back yet. They did an X-ray. They said she didn't have COVID pneumonia. She looked fine. The next day, she died. Fifth grade, not old enough to get a vaccine. And she was in good health. And it progressed that quickly that this little girl passed away. And she had done everything right. They had masking requirement at the school. And the mother was talking about how she was at her daughter's deathbed in the hospital. And at the same time, parents were at a board meeting asking that the mask mandate be lifted. This is serious. This isn't over. We have had more cases in the last week than we've had previously. There was one day when we had 203 positive cases a couple of days ago, in one day. So this Delta variant is a serious thing, and I just really encourage people to take it seriously. That's all I have for today. Thanks, everyone.
Renee, I'd like to take a minute to thank you and Ms. Kathy, if you see her. She's not here now. As a council, I think the biggest thing that we need to be is part of the process. And you are including us in that process. And also, by the time the vote comes, we have a real good idea of what we're voting on. I thank you for that.
Yep, we're doing our best.
I know it's a big job.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Kathy?
Excuse me, but I did want to take a shout out to Katara. She is a former student of mine. And it's always nice to see how our young people have grown up and are moving along and making a difference in the community and that. And I saw her this summer. She's working as well. So it's, I congratulate you and wish you good luck in your studies at Penn State.
I'm sorry, Kathy. You summoned Mr. Witherspoon.
We are. That's right.
Anyway. It's funny how the kids come back into our life. You know, I was in education for a lot of years, and my wife taught preschool at Blessed Sacrament. Well, in my later life, now that I've been retired from education, I have become Mrs. B.'s husband. I'm no longer Mr. B. from East High. Most of the kids I bump into are grandchildren of the kids that I taught, and I say kids in a very respectful way, over at East High or at Prep. It's a neat thing to see that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yes, definitely. Okay, Ms. Lori, I guess we're just about ready. My wife said, "Remember, this is a morning meeting, so don't say 'goodnight.'" So I won't say "goodnight." Have a wonderful day, folks.
City Council adjourned at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keyes, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.